Good evening and welcome to the Chatham Board of Selectmen September 8, 2020 meeting. We are meeting via remote participation only. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. I reminded that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we'll post a record of the meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Okay, so seeing that we are ready to go, I just want to ask that if you are not speaking, to please, if you're able to mute your audio and disable your video. First order of business is take a roll call of the Board of Selectmen, and we'll start with that. Selectmen Kokolas?
Present.
Selectmen Metters?
Present.
Selectmen Castro?
Present.
Blackman Dykens?
Present.
And the Chair is present, obviously. Okay, so our first order of business is to accept the meeting minutes from September 1, 2020. May I get a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
Madam Chair, it's Peter. A motion to approve the September 1 minutes.
Okay, do I have a second for approval?
Second.
Okay, anybody have any edits or changes to the meeting minutes? Dean?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
On page six. Paragraph down to begin support what's expressed. I have a couple of edits in the line that begins that, that properties held in trusts. It should say that some properties held in trusts. And then the next sentence that ends it, that many, I would like noted to be deleted, and the word suggested substituted, it was suggested that many trusts are not reported. And then at the end of that sentence, two lines down from there where it says would need to be refiled. I would like to say readdressed. I think that's more in keeping with the comments that I made. Those are my edits.
Thank you very much, Dean. Anybody else on the board have any edits or changes to the meeting minutes? I don't see Peter, so I'm going to just say, I don't think I see anybody else who wants to, so we'll take a roll call vote. Peter, are you still with us?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'll accept, I'll take a roll of the vote. Selectmen Kokolas?
Aye.
Selectmen Castro?
Aye.
Blackman Dykens?
Aye.
Selectmen Metters?
I will abstain.
And the Chair? That's right. The Chair says aye. Okay. Thank you. That's the meeting minutes for September 1, 2020 have been approved. All right, moving forward. Our order of business tonight is a public announcements and agenda item requests. Are there any from the Board? Dean, I see your hand up. Why don't you start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of points. First, apropos of a question that was posed to you before the meeting started. With respect to the business agenda item that's coming up, I think that the town moderator is a relevant party, just as relevant staff are, so that's to participate during that discussion. And I think that's consistent with our rule. I wanted to ask the town manager, is it going to be a flu clinic sponsored by the town as in previous years? I mean, given the closing of the community center, do we know what the public would like to know because they'll have to make arrangements. A lot of people want to make other arrangements to get their flu shot.
Jill? Yes, Madam Chair. So yes, there is a flu clinic being planned as a drive-through clinic. I don't have the exact dates. I didn't hear that it was actually set. I think that Bob is on the call if he would like for Dr. Duncanson to weigh in on it, but I do know it's in the works.
Okay, I would note for the benefit of the public, I received an email from Cape Cod Healthcare just before the meeting that they're sponsoring flu shots at their pharmacies, so if folks want to go that route, they're able to do that. And lastly, I did want to, as an agenda item request, ask for an update on the utility and roadwork on the West Chatham Runway Project and on Cross Street, which has been unpaved and in difficult passage for a good long time, so we can get some update. And as you recall, we did on the West Chatham defer some utility work with the gas company, and it would be nice to get an update now that we're after Labor Day, where things are going. So those are my requests and announcements. Thank you.
Okay, and Dean, I haven't put it out there yet, and I think the county is, but they're also going to be sponsoring health clinics at the County Health Center up in Barnstable County. So, and that will be announced very soon as well. Okay, any other? Peter, your hand is up, and Jill's hand is still up.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I do have an agenda request, and I'd like to address, I'll call it a deep dive into short-term rentals. And how we're doing in Chatham. I've received a couple of telephone calls. We had a comment last week about short-term rentals, and anything that has to do with, you know, private property and the needs of Chatham and taxes and so forth. Sometimes they're not simple solutions, and it's a complex problem. So what I'd like to suggest, and this is not necessarily everything, or maybe it's too detailed, but we should start with some sort of a definition of what short-term rentals are, the state and local regs that are associated with it, and the guidelines. That's status of our short-term rentals in Chatham. You know, the numbers, how many do we have? I don't know if we had a registry. I think so, but where they're allowed and not allowed. The local regulations and bylaws that are associated with it, and I know a couple of those, and especially when we start getting into taxes, you know, the state has, and we get a short-term rental tax that was put in, what, a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago? And I don't, I believe what Alex said the last time I heard is that Department of Revenue hasn't split that out, so it may be something that we need to look at. And then with that, you kind of say, okay, what do we want to do in the future? Is it a time to consider some sort of policy on short-term rentals? You know, and bylaws that would talk about, you know, do we do them all over town? Do we do it in special places? What's the allocation of short-term rentals to the town's needs? And then, and basically, what started this is we have, we have year-round residents that have short-term rentals as part of their income over the summer. Summertime, and a lot of them are just like B and Bs. And then, on the other hand, if you go to the other extreme, we have Airbnb all over the place, and that's a whole different issue. So I think we need to address that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Any other Selectmen have any, any agenda item requests or public announcements to make?
Not tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you. Corey, anything from you?
No, no.
All right. Jill, I see your hands up.
Yes, Madam Chairman. So a COVID update didn't make it on this agenda, and I have Dr. Bob here to provide an update if the Board would like one.
Yeah.
Yes, please. Thank you. Dr. Duncanson?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick update on the flu clinic that you had previous discussion about. The Chatham resident clinic is going to be on October 8, and from 10:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon, and pre-registration for that will open on September 24. And then the Barnstable County one that you mentioned is going to be September 26, and that's going to be 8 to 12. That's also going to be a drive-through over at the Barnstable County Complex in the parking lot. They have not opened registration for that one quite yet. I was on it earlier today. The site is all up, but the registration forms aren't available quite yet, so hopefully that will be up soon. So those are the two, September 26, Barnstable County, and Chatham residents only on October 8.
So where's the location on that, on the Chatham-only residence?
The Chatham one is going to be a drive-through, and we're going to do it at the Town Annex in the lower parking lot.
Thank you.
We're going to use our EDS setup. We already have everything mapped out. We've already lined up SERV volunteers and Police Department. They've done it before. It's the same one we've used in the past, so we pretty well, that one's pretty easy to set up and get running. And then, as you alluded to, you can also, there's a big push right now to get flu shots early at places like CVS and all, and they take your insurance, so it doesn't cost you anything. So I strongly urge people to go ahead and get that flu shot as early as they can. So now, quickly switching to COVID. We have little over 27.4 million cases worldwide. Roughly 890,000 deaths worldwide. In the U.S., we are over 6.3 million cases, and we are rapidly closing in on 190,000 deaths. The U.S. remains number one. Italy is now, sorry, India is now number two, having surpassed Brazil over the weekend. But we continue to have the dubious distinction of being, number one, both in number of cases as well as the number of deaths. In Massachusetts, as of this afternoon, we had a little over 122,000 cases, both confirmed and probable, and we are now a little over 9,000 cases, deaths in Massachusetts. In Barnstable County, as of this afternoon, we had 1,662 cases and 169 deaths. In Chatham, we're still trending at 28 cases and two deaths that we've been reporting all summer, that, you know, those are ones that we're absolutely sure of, that have been confirmed through the state system. As I frequently say, there may be more cases out there, but if they're not Chatham residents, we would not necessarily know about it. Now, just quickly, two quick updates on two of the current situations that we have going on in Chatham. One, we have the Chatham Squire cluster that we reported to you on last week. As of last Friday, the VNA had confirmed that there were four, sorry, seven positive COVID-19 cases among Chatham Squire employees. And there were a number of other individuals related to the Squire that were self-quarantining because they were identified as close contacts. The Squire underwent deep cleaning and disinfecting with SURF Pro back on Monday, the 31st, the day after the initial notification to us, when they closed down Sunday night, and then they remained closed on Monday and ended up reopening just the patio on Monday and Tuesday. On Tuesday, they closed down again until Thursday, and they underwent another deep cleaning and SURF Pro disinfection on Thursday, and the Squire has been open since then. We are aware that they were closed today. We had not heard from them that it had anything to do with COVID. We have reached out to them to try to get confirmation of that. But it may simply be a case of the fact that they had seven positive employees and a number of other employees that were self-quarantined as close contacts. So after what was hopefully a very busy weekend, their staff frankly may have just needed some downtime to, you know, kind of get things back in shape because of the fact that they were understaffed. So that's the latest update on the Chatham Squire. If we hear anything additional, we will be sure to let the Board and the public know. We did send out another press release that on Friday because we'd gotten quite a few calls last week from people that said they had been at the Squire and were concerned. But again, the one thing to keep in mind, if you're not identified as a close contact, meaning you spent more than 15 minutes within six feet of somebody. You would not be identified as a close contact, and you would not be reached out to by VNA or other healthcare organization for contact tracing purposes. So if you were sitting outside and simply eating dinner, and the server came over, took your order, brought your food, brought your bill, and that only amounted to, you know, five or six minutes in total, and they were wearing their masks and you're outdoors, you would not be identified as a close contact. So we did put out a press release on Friday just to kind of give people some more information about what it really means to be a close contact, and assuage some people as to why they may not have been contacted by VNA or the contact tracing collaborative, because they would not have met that definition. And then our second incident occurred late Friday afternoon, as they frequently do on the Friday before a holiday weekend. We got a call from Chatham Bars Inn indicating that they had a positive server. They had one positive case who was identified as a food server. We had a number of conversations with them Friday afternoon and into the early evening. They went ahead and they closed down the main kitchen as well as the Star Dining Room and the Harborview Meeting Room, because that's where the individual had worked. And again, this individual was only a server, so he picked up the food in the kitchen, basically brought it out to your table, and then when you're done, he took away the dirty plate. So again, he was questioned by both VNA as well as the HR staff at Chatham Bars Inn, could not identify anyone in particular that met the definition of a close contact. So the those three areas were closed Friday evening. CBI had already, when they called us, they had already made arrangements with SURF Pro to come in Friday night. SURF Pro arrived around 11 o'clock, was there until about 3 o'clock in the morning, cleaning, deep cleaning, and disinfecting those three areas. As a result, the main kitchen reopened Saturday morning, and we made that decision because we, in our conversations with Chatham Bars Inn staff, they indicated that ever since this COVID situation has started, and I don't mean just with them, but earlier in the summer since they reopened. They were cleaning and disinfecting the kitchen roughly every two hours as standard protocol, just to make sure that they didn't have any issues. So they reopened the main kitchen Saturday morning for breakfast, and then they reopened the Star Dining Room as well as the Harborview Meeting Room for dinner Saturday night after the required 24-hour closure period. I reached out to them today. They have not, nothing has changed. They have not had any other employees identified as being positive. So that's a good thing. So it looks like that one was very short-lived, or I shouldn't say short-lived, but didn't reach very far. Chatham Bars Inn notified all their employees and all their guests on Friday as to what was going on. The worker that tested positive is not a Chatham resident, but VNA had likewise, we notified VNA Friday afternoon, and VNA followed up in conversations with both Chatham Bars Inn and with the involved individual to make sure that no close contacts were identified that needed further follow-up. So those are the quick status on our two incidents that we had recently, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jeff, go ahead. This is an update to the Board. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So did CBI do any testing of any further employees, Bob? Did they spread that out at all?
Yeah, I'm not aware. We're getting back in touch with them on that. They're not necessarily required to unless the employees are identified as close contacts.
Yeah.
You know, they're not required to test all employees. Nobody is. None of the restaurants are, and only the close contacts are required to be tested. And that's why frankly, we brought VNA in to make sure that all the protocols and all were being followed as opposed to just having the in follow-up with the employee themselves.
Okay, I don't want to prolong the conversation, but for servers wearing masks, I wonder how they get it.
Well, you know, you have to understand, they all have lives outside their, you know, their employment, if you will, and as we all know, that, you know, anybody could pick it up anywhere at any time. So, yeah, it could have been that they contacted it somewhere off-property on the weekend or at home. You know, there's no way to know.
It just seems like the restaurants are struggling a bit with it. Thank you.
Yeah, they are, because, you know, the amount of people that pass through and, you know, whatnot, so, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Bob, in the decision that you made to allow them to open Saturday morning, did they provide you with a cleaning log? Are they keeping cleaning logs? Is that how you were able to determine that they're cleaning every two hours, or was it a verbal confirmation?
No, I had verbal confirmation from them. They did provide us with the cleaning logs from SURF Pro that took place.
No, I was asking about, clarification, Bob. I just wanted to know if it was a cleaning log from their cleaning protocol, whether they had?
No, I, they said they had, and I had no reason to believe that they were not being forthcoming and truthful, so.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks. Just wanted to clarify that. Any other questions from the Board? Quickly? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to, any other staff have any agenda, public announcements? Okay. Okay, then we'll turn to the remote participants for public announcements and agenda item requests. I will take a list of those who would wish to speak, and then we'll call on them as noted. Anybody wish to speak?
Elaine Gibbs.
Anyone else? Got it, Elaine. Anyone else?
I, Shereen, it's Susanna Nickerson. Is this when I would make my statement?
And if it's relevant to the special town meeting, Susanna, we would wait until the public comment period.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Tom Farkas, I see is on the.
Yeah, Shereen, you just answered my question. I'll wait until that. Although I just want to add that I have another meeting, so, at 7, so I don't know when, what the timing of that is going to be, but.
We're moving it along as best we can, and it should be coming up very soon, okay? Anybody else other than Elaine Gibbs that would like to speak on public announcements or agenda item requests? Okay, hearing none, then Elaine?
Yes, thank you. I have an agenda request. I wasn't sure if it was going to be an agenda item or if Dr. Duncanson was going to talk about it. I am. I am requesting that there be an agenda item, but I think even waiting a week is too long because it's time sensitive, that when we have a restaurant that has more than one employee test positive, that they are shut down until all employees are tested with the rapid test. It takes 15 minutes. The way that this turned out was on Sunday, they had one. They opened up Monday after some deep cleaning, and Monday afternoon, they had three, but the people who ate there didn't know that there were three tests pending. And then they deep cleaned again, then they opened up Thursday and Friday, and then on Friday, they had three more. If they had done all of that testing before they opened up, I don't think we'd be in this situation where we are kind of unique in that, you know, any resort town is. I would conservatively estimate that over 1,000 people passed through the Squire in a two-week period. And Bob had said that all of the people who tested positive said they had no contact as defined by the state in the 15 minutes. So that means they didn't get it from the patrons. First of all, you're questioning people who are sick. So I, I question their ability to remember when they're really sick because I think also young people don't get tested unless they're symptomatic. So I think, I think that we are allowed to have more stringent regulations than the state to say that their definition, they either have a problem with their definition in terms of it's 15 minutes is required, or the restaurant employees are contracting it somewhere else. I, I don't understand why people are, should be put in a position where they go into a restaurant and they don't know that seven people in that restaurant at some point had had COVID. We need to get tough. We, we've had two clusters now. And Baker at some point is going to look at Chatham and go, you know, three clusters? You know, we're going to shut you down. We can't let that happen. We need to get back to business and make sure that our, our, our residents can get back to work, open up the schools. If this gets into the school system, we're going to be in trouble. Do we know, and I would have loved to have been able to ask Bob, have all the employees been tested? Are there any results pending? You know, could we find out tomorrow or the next day that there are five more people? We should ask those questions. And I don't see that happening. To say that they did not have contact with the employees or with the patrons when it was over a two-week period, nobody was contacted. No patrons apparently, according to this statement, were contacted. The 1,000 people who went through there over the two weeks, despite the fact that telephone numbers were taken, not one of them was contacted by the VNA. I don't know what the point is. I think it's to make us feel good, and I don't think it's doing any good. So I, I hope that you would ask the Board of Health to say that two or more cases, everybody gets tested before you can reopen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to make a public announcement or a meeting, agenda item request at the remote participants? Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to new business. And we have one agenda item, a business agenda item on the, on tonight, and it's a petition special town meeting. We need to be discussing dates and the articles to be included on the warrant and refer articles to the planning board for public hearings. So we will make those presentations in just a moment, but I just want to let anybody know that some of the recommendations that you might want to speak to is the referring of the petition to the planning board, the dates for a special town meeting, and the location, and to discuss any additional articles to be included in the special town meeting warrant, and to set the date to close the warrant. So I'm saying that, I will go through the list of people who would like to speak for the public comment period on this business agenda item. So I'll take a roll call of people. I think that Mr. Fark, Farkas had, I believe that's his name. I'm sorry. My apologies if I didn't say it right. We already have, we have Janet Williams has her hand up, and speak out, please, if you want your, want to talk, Susanna.
If they don't get to Tom Farkas, I will speak in his, on his behalf. That's, otherwise, I don't need to.
Who is this, please?
Janet Williams.
Okay. Okay, so it's either you or, or he. Okay, thank you, Janet. Susanna?
Yes.
You men, you mentioned that you wanted to speak. Okay.
Yes, please.
Anybody else?
Elaine Gibbs.
Got it, Elaine. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have my hand up, Shereen. Mike Thompson.
Mike Thompson, okay. I'm just making a list, Mike, so I don't see, I'm, I'll go down the list, see, let me see. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during the public comment period on, on this agenda item? All right, so we have Tom Farkas and/or Janet Williams, Susanna Nickerson, Elaine Gibbs, and Mike Thompson. Am I correct? All right, so why don't we start with Mr. Farkas? Welcome.
Hi, guys. I, I have, it's very simple. We would definitely like to put the climate policy article on the warrant for a special town meeting if it's held earlier than next spring. Otherwise, we'll defer to the, whatever the Board of Select wants. So that's basically our request.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. Susanna?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Susanna Nickerson, Main Street. I am the petitioner in Chatham for the single-use plastic water bottle ban. I am the Chatham liaison of sustainable practices. 10 towns across the Cape will be voting to ban single-use plastic water bottles this fall. We in Chatham hope that the Board of Select people will support our article, article on the fall special town meeting warrant. Those of us that believe climate change is real know that we must take action quickly. By eliminating this one unnecessary plastic item, we can substantially, substantially reduce our oil use, therefore reducing greenhouse gases. The health of our entire ecosystem depends on our changing, our destructive habits. Our health, the health of wildlife, and the health of our planet are all at stake. And thank you.
So Susanna, are you ask, are you asking that we put this on the special town meeting? Is that what you're asking?
We're asking if you do, if, if you do have the special town meeting, we would like to be on the agenda.
Okay.
And unless it's another case of everybody deferring.
Okay.
I, I really don't know what your plans are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be discussing that later. Elaine, you're next.
Yes, I do have some concerns, and I don't know if it's within your, you know, control to make that decision, but to be in a position now where we're going to have a special town meeting on, on a massive project that's coming before you, that's going to have significant impact on the downtown, and to do it where it's going to have to be outside in the middle of October. I don't know if there's some other law here or rule that says in a state of emergency that can be waived because this, I think this is a pretty significant project. My only other question is, are you going to be discussing any of the specifics of the, of the bylaw project at this point? Because I do have some comments on that, but if it's only about scheduling this special town meeting, then I won't. But if you're going to be discussing the specifics of the advantages and disadvantages of it, I would like to comment.
I think what we're doing, Elaine, is we're defer, we're referring this over to Planning Board for, yeah, we're referring this over to Planning Board, so that might be where you want to weigh in on that.
Okay, so you're not going to have any discussion about the issues surrounding it at this point? You're just?
No, I'm unsure that, you know, somebody, Dean has his hand up, maybe. Dean?
Madam Chair, to just try to address Elaine's question. I think that probably at a future town, at a future selectments meeting, perhaps as early as next week, we're going to be asked to take votes recommendation to town, to the special town meeting on these various items. I know in the past we took a vote endorsing this particular petition article, but, but all the petition articles died on June 22nd, so it's basically going to be a selectments, I'm sorry, this article is a petition article that's new. And I would think that at the selectments meeting, when that is on the agenda, that would be an appropriate time for Ms. Gibbs or anybody else who wants to talk about the pros and cons of, of the underlying proposal to take place during the public comment period. I hope that answers the question. At least, that's my understanding.
That does. Thank you very much.
Anything else, Elaine?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Thompson?
Hi. Yeah, I would just like to make a pitch to include all the 10 projects that were approved by the Community Preservation Committee back in January and was, was struck off the warrant of the last meeting. So these items would have been approved at the, at the normal meeting, and they would have been, the work would have started in July 1st. That has not happened, and we have several significant projects that I would like to see put on the, this new warrant. So I'm basically advocating for all those projects to be put on the warrant. And they can, I'm not suggesting they all be dealt with individually. I think Bill Litchfield did a very great job of, of putting them together, and I would advocate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have public comments at this time? Dean, your hand's still up? Is there something you wanted to add?
No.
I'll take your hand.
It's the first time it's worked, this feature.
All right. That's good to know, right? All right, so those are the public comments for the business agenda, which is petition special town meeting. And so we're going to go through this. Jill, did you want to give an overview of everything to set us up? Start us off. Let's set us off.
So in your packet, you have an agenda report, and I'll summarize that. So we received the petition for the special town meeting on September 3rd, and the town clerk was able to certify those signatures. And that's exactly when the clock starts, is September 3rd. So Mass General Law requires us to call a special town meeting by petition within 45 days. And counting out those days, it appears that we need to have it by October 17th, 2020. And so with that, and before that, we have to post the warrant 14 days in advance, and we also have to have the Planning Board conduct their public hearing on the, on the protective zoning bylaw amendments in order to provide a recommendation at town meeting. And that requires posting two consecutive weeks in the newspaper of the public hearing. So the public has the, the right to know and is able to participate with that. What we had talked about internally with staff and understanding that the Monomoy Regional School District is going to use as, as much space or every space possible for learning, that we would recommend that the location be at the Veterans Field again. It seemed to work out quite well, and we'll have to do some tweaks with regard to what time the Board requests to have the meeting or directs us to have that meeting, you know, solar glare and so forth. But I think it, the setup would be pretty much the same for the number of seats and where the check-in area. So I think we have that down pat. Unfortunately, with the outside location, we don't have any technology available to us. So we do have the audio, the audio consultant available for amplification and microphones and so forth, but we won't have the screen for the cart person to take a, I want to say stenograph or a recording of the meeting that everybody could see is traditional for our annual and special town meetings when they're inside. Also, we won't have staff making a presentation on those articles. And more importantly, the warrant is not mailed out to every resident. So it will be posted on the website. We'll have it posted at the post offices and in the town offices that have vestibules, we will have hard copies available. But we'll end up bringing the hard copies to the site, so we'll just have to be careful to pick up the papers so that they're not blowing all over the field. We'll be under COVID protocols, so we'll have the six-foot social distancing. We'll have everybody wearing masks if they're able to do so. And we're working to get volunteers to wipe down the microphones after someone speaks, and we'll have them placed strategically and, and possibly a little more than we had at the Janu, the June 22nd Annual Town Meeting. And what we do know for sure is that the climate in Chatham, you know, before 10 a.m., we might hit fog later in the day, in, in early evening, we probably will hit fog. So when you consider setting in the day and the time, there are lights there, so we'll have no problem. But just to keep that in consideration. So we suggested, or I suggested a couple of dates. We looked at Saturday dates first, and we think the soonest date we could do it, and this would be the preference of the town clerk because early voting is going to commence in mid-October. But we're looking at October 3rd, which is a Saturday. And that then would have you closing the warrant at your next selectments meeting, which is September 15th. So review the articles, vote your recommendations, and close the warrant. And then the Finance Committee will need to have their hearing or, or public meeting on the article. We also have October 10th available, which is a Saturday, but we don't have October 17th available as the audio consultant is not available, and that's actually the first day for the early voting. We also looked at possible weeknight special town meeting dates, and we do have confirmation from the audio vendor consultant that they are available on Tuesday, October 6th, Wednesday, October 7th. October 12th is a holiday, so they're not available, and the town offices will be closed. October 13th is a Tuesday, they're available, and October 14th is a Wednesday. And then we also need to plan either the next day or night or two days, just in case there's inclement weather. I think with this one, people will need to dress accordingly, bring an umbrella. Because I know the moderator is very efficient in the meeting. We might be able to get it done before the, the rain comes or ends. But we'll work, you know, as hard as we can to have the meeting on the day that the Board selects. And then it's a matter of what the Board wants to do with the number of articles to place on, on the warrant. We absolutely have to have the petitioned article, so that's one. And if there were any articles, and at this time, we're not proposing any, that require a financial transfer, it would have to come for free cash because you'll already set the date or set the tax rate on September 15th. So it would be a free cash transfer. So the cost of the annual town meeting, we had estimated in around $11,000 back in June 2020, and that was for equipment rentals, staffing costs, overtime. And, and our preference is to have a meeting and have staff set up that day of the meeting and then break down after the meeting or immediately following it. Because if it's, if it's out overnight, we're going to have to wipe it down again, and we just want to make sure, you know, all the equipment is secure. So same day setup and breakdown. And then the Planning Board hearings are, are going to be advertised in a local newspaper, and based on the cost of last year, it's going to be about $1,680. And the Board, as you, the Board of Selectmen, may want to consider asking the applicant to pay the cost of that advertising. It's done in other communities, but this would be the first time that we've ever asked an applicant to cover that cost. So just putting it out there, if you don't do anything, I think that's fine, too. So as the chairman had noted, for tonight's meeting, we want you to refer the petitioned protective zoning and bylaw amendment to the Planning Board. Tonight is essential for that. Decide on the desired date and time for the scheduling and plus an alternative weather date. Confirm the location that we're proposing, which is Veterans Field. And we can elaborate on the safety protocols, but exactly, it's, it's almost exactly the same as we had in June. And then decide what other articles you want to put on the warrant and set the date to close the warrant, which we would recommend for next week, September 15th. So in your packet, Shawna has the petitioned articles that the Board members had suggested automatically placing on a future warrant, which would be this potential special town meeting warrant if, if the petitioners desire. But we had heard from a couple of petitioners that they don't desire to have their petition articles reviewed. And just working backwards, the petition article to adopt the to adopt the residential real estate tax exemption, the petitioner has asked for that be deferred to the annual town meeting. And the petition zoning by law amendment article, uh, for the, I lost it, for the clarification of definition of this, of the sheds, uh, they've asked that to be deferred. And I just need confirmation, um, on the last zoning petitioned article, which is the extension of the GB1 zone, because that would also need to be, uh, transferred to the planning board tonight for that to appear on the warrant. So, um, happy to answer any questions and that's it for my report.
Uh, thank you, Jill. Um, all right. So we have a, a lot to unpack here, just to, um, to go through. And I'm going to ask how you'd like to proceed with this. I see Cory's got his hand up first. Um, we can go down the laundry list or we can have a general discussion and then just sort of shush things out. Um, how would you all like to proceed? Laundry list or shushing things out? Jeff, I see your hands up.
I'll just go right through the recommendations that Jill has listed.
Okay. All right. So why don't we take, take on the refer the petition protective zoning by law amendment article to the planning board? Uh, let's, let's see, we got Cory, Dean, Peter. Um, so Cory, why don't you kick us off?
Uh, if we're just going to do with the referral to the planning board, then I will move that we've referred this to the planning board to hold a public hearing. I'm fine with that.
Do you have a second on that?
Madam Chair?
Okay. Yes. Dean?
I speak to that motion. Um, I, I think, I, I think we should deal with the setting of the annual, of the special town meeting date first before we start making decisions about the planning board. We don't.
I would love.
Hold on. Let, let Dean finish and then Cory, you can go.
We don't, we don't have the authority, at least, like, um, under, under the law, absent some, some extraordinary circumstance, which I'm not clear on, to, to, um, not go forward with a special town meeting. But we do have authority, I think, not to take immediate action on the planning board. I, I'm someone who is somewhat miffed with this petition article.
Good for you.
I'd like to defer conversation and discussion about the first recommendation on the planning board until we deal with the special town meeting.
Okay. Um, we didn't have a second on that. So, um, but Cory had had, uh, wanted to speak to this.
No, I think Peter seconded it.
Peter seconded it. Okay, Peter, thanks. Um, we can start a discussion unless, um, Cory, Cory, go ahead.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure where we're heading with this. I, I had some general comments, um, more, more focused on the, the date and time and kind of general makeup of the, of the special town meeting. So I don't know if you want me to move forward with my comments or if you want to, I, I'm not sure how you want to proceed, Madam Chair.
Uh, we have a motion on the table to, um, refer the petition protective zoning by law amendment to planning board. So I think we either have to, we, we should deal with that, whether we want to defer that or, um, if, if, uh, want to.
I'm happy to withdraw my, my initial motion, uh, to refer to the planning board so we can have a dialogue more focused on time, date and specifics, if that is more, uh, amenable to the board.
All right. Dean, do you, I, uh, Peter, do you want to defer your, your second?
I'll support Cory. Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Well, let's regroup then and we will, um, discuss the setting the date and time for the special town meeting. Um, so let's start. Cory, why don't you, wanted to kick that off? Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I'm going to keep this pretty straightforward. Um, you know, last month, we had a discussion, uh, whether we did or did not want to, you know, call a special town meeting ourselves. Um, we, we heard about the petition, uh, possible petition, um, you know, uh, campaign on, on this one, um, item. Uh, we all recognized that the petitioner would probably have a highly, uh, um, successful rate of getting the 200 signatures to call the special town meeting. But we had some discussions and for various reasons, which were all valid, uh, we opted not to call a special town meeting ourselves. Uh, fast forward to today, um, the only thing that has changed is that this one petitioner has collected the required 200 signatures, um, to, to, to move this, um, meeting forward. It is required for us to do it within the timetable. Um, that's what we're forced with, with this tonight's agenda item. Um, when we had made the initial discussion, decision ourselves not to hold a special town meeting, um, I don't recall any huge outcry, uh, from any of the other petitioners about deferring things to the annual town meeting, which in, in my opinion, frankly, is where they, they belong. Um, that's the usual venue we use for our, our town, uh, business. And I think it's, it's the most appropriate venue to, to discuss and vote these either articles up or down. So, um, long story short, uh, I'm, I'm perfectly in fine with the October 3rd date of a Saturday. Um, I would think, I, I'm of the opinion, we have a one item agenda. Uh, we, we would have the meeting early in the morning, either 10 or 11, um, to, to, to deal with the October weather, which is, as we know, could be very much unknown. Um, but I believe that nothing really has changed, um, except for the fact that we are required to hold a special town meeting on this one particular article. Um, so I wouldn't do, I would not be in favor of doing anything beyond that one item. On a side note, um, the $11,000 cost, um, was a little bit shocking to me. I always had the number of about a $7,000, uh, price tag for regular, you know, for regular meetings. Uh, I do know the applicant did offer to, to pay some of the cost for these meetings. I do know they've been told that, uh, that is not possible. Um, just for belts and suspenders, I don't know would be viable for us to get an illegal opinion on that, to see if there is any opportunity for the applicant to pay for some of that cost, um, because the $11,000 was extremely shocking to me, uh, higher than I expected. So, uh, those are my general comments at the moment. Um, I would defer, um, I'll be allowed to speak again, maybe on some other specifics, but, um, this is kind of generally where I'm, I'm, I am right now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Dean. You have your hand up. And then Jeff?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, I, I would echo, uh, Selectman Metter's, um, suggestion and, and formally asked the town manager if she could get an opinion from town council as to whether the, um, applicant, uh, could, um, uh, finance, um, some or all of the costs of this special town meeting and starting with the advertising, because I know, um, it's my understanding that when people go before the regulatory boards in town, they, they pay for the advertising anyway. Um, just in general, uh, um, and I speak as someone who has been very supportive, I think the rest of the board of the underlying project, which I, you know, I think we're going to discuss a recommendation next week. But, um, I, I was disappointed that the petition came in because, uh, this board made a conscious effort and decision not to go forward with a September town meeting based on considerations of the public health. And I think those considerations, uh, still attain. Nonetheless, uh, we have a legal obligation to go forward and set a date. I'm okay with October 3rd. Um, we're getting it, once we get into October, especially if we get into the latter part of October, we know the weather changes. I don't want people to feel like they're, they have to bundle up like they're going to a football game, uh, in the fall. And I would suggest that we have, we, we conduct it at high noon, uh, outdoors in Veterans Field. Um, as far as what goes on the warrant, obviously this petition article would have to go on the warrant. Um, I, uh, believe and, uh, I said, any of the other petitioners who submitted petitions for the annual town meeting, uh, of 2020, who want their petitions to go forward, I think those should be placed on this warrant because, uh, this board voted a resolve, uh, on June 9th, that we would place, um, those articles on the warrant of the next town meeting following the one, the annual town meeting in June. At that time, we had scheduled a special town meeting for June 9th, for September 19th, because we thought the COVID situation might clear up a little bit, but it hasn't obviously. So I sort of feel committed to that. Uh, so, um, you know, others may, may feel differently because circumstances have changed. Um, but, um, uh, with, as I understand it, and I, I didn't hear Jill, I didn't hear you talk about whether of the stepping stones road petition, but my understanding is, is it still, does it still attain that this, that the petition is there, want theirs deferred to the annual town meeting in 2021?
Yes, a referral for that too, uh, May 2021. Yes.
There really are only two others that are, that, where that request has been made to include them. Uh, the, the bottle, uh, the plastic bottle and that Suzanne and Nickerson spoke to, and the climate change that Mr. Parkus spoke to. So I would be okay with those two items going on the warrant. I agree with Mr. Metters that there should be a very narrow warrant. Um, it's curious to me as to who's going to speak. I, that's the moderator, I, I believe is still on this, um, meeting. And, um, uh, the petitioner is very curious, uh, is a, the applicant on the form, which isn't the petition, but the applicant is listed as a company with a Newton address. Um, the, the principals of the applicant, I, I, I don't believe their signatures are on the doc, on the petition themselves, because perhaps because I, I think they may not be voters, so I could be directed on that. But, uh, I'm, uh, since the moderator is on, I, I very curious as to who would be, uh, speaking to this article, uh, at the town meeting itself. But in any event, just to sum up, um, October 3rd, noon time, um, if, if the applicant is willing to fund some of the money, uh, for it, and if that can legally, legally be done, I think we should pursue that. Um, and I think that the, um, warrant should be limited to, uh, this petition article on, on the Montomoy Theater property and the two other petitions that I've mentioned. As far as, I know Dr. Thompson would like to get all the CPA articles done. So, I think one of those is subject to potential debate and discussion. I think we should try to get people in there and out of there fast. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Um, is the town moderator still on the call? I'd love to hear him weigh in on this right now, if that's possible.
I, I am, Madam Chairman, Bill Litchfield. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to, uh, join with you in deliberations. I appreciate that. Uh, I would echo what I have heard before that, uh, October 3rd, uh, midday would be an appropriate time, uh, appropriate in any other circumstances. The irony of the five or six of us being separated for public health reasons and not being in a room, um, is when compared with the fact that somebody has proposed that a couple of hundred of us gather, uh, in one location is to me rather astounding. And I, I share Mr. Castro's sentiments and that I think of Mr. Matters about the unfortunate circumstances in which you've been placed. You have no choice. Uh, I would suggest, however, that the warrant be limited to the petitioned article. I recognize what Mr. Castro said about the commitment that was made. Having, having said that though, um, I am very pro-town meeting, as I think you all know. I, by no means want to put things, uh, out of town meeting's ambit, quite the contrary. You know that in June, we had 200 people where we ordinarily get 500 or 600 people. Scheduling a special town meeting under these circumstances, which again, you have no choice but to do, deprives several hundred voters in all likelihood, who would otherwise attend because of their health concerns or otherwise from doing so. So they are prevented from voting on climate change, they're prevented on, on voting on Montomoy Theater, overlay district. The, the circumstances are anti-town meeting. There's an irony there as well. Um, I don't know whether I responded to, to the question, but that is what I wanted to offer for the time being.
Thank you, um, Mr. Moderator. Um, I just want to add to that comment, um, to give it a different perspective for Selectman Castro is, when we made this commitment, we made this commitment with the understanding that COVID-19 would probably be abated by now. And that we would have been walking through a special town meeting to, um, deal with the issues that, uh, we had to, um, bring forward with a full abundance of, um, of, of attendees. So that's not going to happen this way. And so I'm in, I am very much in agreement with the moderator on, on this tack, um, to take. Um, but I see that we have, uh, Selectman Kokolas and Selectman Dyken's hand is, uh, still raised. So, uh, Selectman Kokolas, would you like to weigh in?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think Jeff was ahead of me, but that's okay. I'll take it.
Oh, my apologies, Jeff.
Are you recognizing me, Madam Chair, or what?
Um, yes. Uh, Peter, if you don't mind, Jeff did have his hand up first. Sorry.
Peter, you're, you're, you're a gentleman, but you knew that, didn't you? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Peter. Sorry about that.
Yeah. I, uh, I like this project, but I'm really very ambivalent about the way the methodology used by this applicant. Um, very disappointed. The leadership of this town had, had taken votes at least twice to not have this special town meeting, um, knowing that, um, we were still at risk from this virus. So I, I think that, um, this is a, a fairly selfish approach to his development. And I, for one, am not going to vote, um, until I hear the results of that planning board, uh, meeting. I want to hear what the hearing results are. I want to hear the thoughtful approach by the planning board and I want to hear what their recommendation is to, to this board. So I am one, I, I would like not to vote until I hear their recommendation on both the zoning articles, the overlay district, uh, for both. I, I think it's very important that we get their input. I think it's very important that we have, because we have no choice, that we schedule this as soon as we possibly can and that we ask the planning board to meet as soon as they possibly can. And I think that town meeting needs to be in the warmest part of the day, as, as already been said, 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock, right? You know, call it noon time, but in the warmest part of the day. And, and that, you know, we don't forget that. We're, we're, we act in the, and we act as, as fiduciaries of the public health. And that's why this board made those decisions and made those votes earlier. And I, I really am upset that, um, even though I like the project, even though I love the theater, everybody loves the theater, loves the project, I'd like to see a little bit more, um, affordable housing, retainable housing in the mix there. Um, I don't think they've gone far enough for that. And I think we need to raise that as a board and I think the planning board needs to raise it. But anyway, um, uh, those are my thoughts right now. I really appreciated, uh, the moderator's points about town meeting. As he well knows and as this board well knows, I'm a, I'm a huge proponent of town meeting. I think it's great. And I think to, to, to bring those other articles, I'm sorry, Dean, but to bring those other articles forward without having a full annual town meeting is denying certain voters of their, of their, their right as a, as taxpayers of this town and residents of this town. So those are my thoughts for now. Uh, again, I'm not going to vote until I hear the planning board's thoughts. Um, I, I don't want to vote until we get their input. I don't think it's fair, um, for us to even take a vote or a recommendation. And I think we have it on the 3rd and have the planning board as fast as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff, uh, Peter, finally, so for your comments.
Uh, I'm, I'm going to, uh, normally I wouldn't reiterate what other people said, but I think it's important. I'm going to, uh, just give you my thoughts and generally, I, I also agree that October 3rd is a good day. You have two days after that, uh, on the schedule that we could need if we had a bad weather day. And then you, we could even get into later October. Uh, I think October 3rd is a good date, especially if we have a, a single, uh, a single article, a single warrant article. Um, I, I, and I just go back to basically what Cory said, nothing's really changed since a month ago, uh, when we made a decision on how to move forward. I understand what, what Dean is saying, uh, but I tend to agree more with the moderator where, I wish I thought of this myself, the circumstances are really anti-town meeting. Um, I think a number of those articles, which I agree with, by the way, on climate change and so forth, need to be aired at a full town meeting, need to be discussed ahead of time. Um, I, I want to make one other, um, comment that has to do with the, uh, the, the article. I, I understand what the petitioner wants, understand what he, what he said about what's, what's needed. Uh, and that's from his, his business case. And, and this was not a decision for us to do a special town meeting. It was the petitioner who came in and said, and got his 200 votes and legally, I, that's fine. I agree with that. We'll move, we'll, we'll move ahead. However, since the Otis is on them now, he said that it would take five years if he had to wait for a special town meeting. I would expect that in all, in all cases, that this would be a priority with this, with, 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 uh, this developer. Uh, I too supported the, um, uh, the theater and especially the, uh, affordable housing, which is part of what they're going to have to do afterwards. I know there's going to be a lot of questions on what's affordable housing, what's going to be there, it's going to be a change. There's going to be a, an argument. And I think the normal way we always do things when we have a bylaw change is it comes to the Board of Selectmen, it's sent over to the planning board, they do the deliberations and have a, have a, uh, public hearing, and then it comes back to us with their recommendations. And we can either accept or not. we can either accept or not accept them. But I would agree, again, with Jeff, we don't vote on anything until that goes to the, it goes to the planning board. So I'm going to make one small change to what time, maybe. I'd do it around 1 o'clock. And you're going to, you're going to like the reason why, because we're on daylight savings time. The sun is going to be higher at 1 o'clock than it will be at 12 o'clock. Besides, that's lunchtime. And maybe we'll get a few more people. Not necessarily that we need a lot of people. That's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean, did you have any additional comments? Your hand is raised.
I did, I did. And I wanted to ask a couple of questions. I know you haven't spoken yet, Madam Chair, so I don't want to jump on your top.
That's fine. Go right ahead.
I don't know if the petitioner is on the call, if someone representing the petitioner. We should probably hear from that individual. I want to sort of refine my question to the town moderator. And I'm very curious, and this is a matter of the mechanics of the town meeting, who speaks for the petitioner if the petitioner is not a voter in the town? And I just really wanted to ask my fellow board members if, when we do take a vote this evening on the scheduling of the town meeting, that we have a separate motion and vote on whether anything other than this petition article goes on the town meeting, because I would like the opportunity to vote in the minority on that, unless the two petitioners who spoke earlier have changed their mind and now are willing to defer until the annual town meeting. But I've made a promise, and I want to keep it. And as far as what Selectman Dykens has said about waiting to vote, and I think Selectman Kokolas said the same thing, till after the planning board, the concern I have there is that there is a deadline by which the warrant is going to be printed, and the Selectmen's recommendations would be contained in the printed warrant. We don't typically, the moderator does not ask the Selectman for the recommendation at the meeting, he does ask the planning board. And so that's just an observation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think you meant the Finance Committee, and not the Planning Board, when you mentioned. Thank you. Okay, we can obviously take a vote, and if we're not prepared, everybody can vote to abstain if they need to, if we need to go forward through that. I guess we turn to the moderator for an answer to the question on who would speak to that article, if you might.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman. Actually, the petitioner doesn't have any special status. Anyone can offer a motion on town meeting floor. This developer is off Cape, is not a voter, insofar as I know. But obviously, or I would presume, that the developer could ask a voter to make a presentation. We do have, under our rules, the possibility of non-voters speaking by consent of the meeting. I think circumstantially, I would hope that the petitioner, the developer, could find a voter to speak on his or their behalf. But the petitioner doesn't have to make the motion, anyone can make the motion. And then the fact that the proponent is a non-voter could be at the will of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jeff, your hand is back up again, and we haven't heard from a representative of the petitioner. So let's hear from you, Jeff, and if there's a motion that you're going to offer, and then...
No, no, actually, I just want to make the point that I think if we waited to vote our recommendation, it can be announced at town meeting as well, a special town meeting. The moderator can announce how we voted. It doesn't have to be in the printed warrant. We've done that before.
Yeah, we have called a, sure. Go ahead.
Very, absolutely, Mr. Dykens. We certainly look to your board for comments.
Okay, so I haven't weighed in on this yet. And I think that I'm in agreement with the October 3 Veterans Field, with alternative dates being the 6th and 7th. I think 1 o'clock, Peter's made a good point about the warmest time of day then. However, this has been something that I've spoken publicly about not being very pleased about, because we did, as a board, we really worked hard, and we gave it a lot of thought not to do a special town meeting on anything due to the public safety issues that we were facing as a community. And, you know, sitting on some of the boards, and some of the, some of the task force that I've been doing outside of this town, you know, it's really been an eye-opener on, you know, what's been going on in the community, the surrounding communities in our community as well. And we've only had the health and wellness of the town of Chatham at interest here. Understanding that, it is a good project, we've all been supportive of it, it's just, I'm, you know, I'm, it's a zoning article, it's not about getting the theater built like sooner than later. So I'm hard pressed to understand that timetable from a personal level. Jeff, you had your hand up again.
I'm sorry, no.
Okay, that's a continuing. So saying all that, that's where I'm at, as far as looking at those alternative dates. I guess those alternative dates are in, excuse me, my computer is dying, so I have to grab really quick the cord. The alternative dates are obviously midweek, so we really have to be mindful of. It is now 7:10, and it's getting dark outside, and that's fine, but it could get chilly for an evening sort of meeting. Perhaps it could be done at 5:00, 5:00 p.m. I'd like it 5:00 a.m., but I don't think anybody else in town would. But 5:00 p.m. would be a good time to have it, for those alternative dates. But that's my thoughts. And I was wondering if petitioner or the, or the, any representative of the petitioner is on the call, would you just speak up, please, and let me know if you'd like to speak?
Hi there. Yes, my name is Ally Clark, I'm with Alexander Property. I'm here.
Hi, Ally. Is there any guests? Would you like to speak to?
At this point, no, I would, I don't really have any specific comments to say, to answer some of the boardman's, Selectman, excuse me, question in regards to whether or not we are registered voters in Chatham. We are not. And similar to what the moderator mentioned, we have not identified who within our firm will be necessarily be speaking at the special town meeting. But I believe that's what I wanted to touch on. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, hearing any other discussion. Cory, your hand is up.
I was prepared to make a motion if you're ready.
I think we're ready.
All right. I propose, I move that we call a special town meeting on Saturday, October 3, 2020, 1 o'clock in the afternoon, on Veterans Field, to, with an alternative date of Tuesday, October 6, with a 5:00 p.m. start date, as our rain date. And that's it.
Okay. You want to add a second alternative date, just in case we're in hurricane season?
Second.
Go ahead, Cory.
As a, as a belt suspender secondary at 5:00 p.m.
I'm not wishing any hurricanes on the town of Chatham, but, you know. Okay, it's active. Do we have a second? I think, Dean, you seconded the motion prior to him finishing it. So would you like to do that again?
I'll second it as finished. I just wanted to ask, does anyone know when does daylight, when does, when does daylight savings time cease? Is it after, is it November now? Peter, do you know?
I think so.
I don't see Dr. Dickinson on the call, so I was for the best.
I know it's not in the first part of October. It's going to be at the...
All right. Thank you.
Ends on Sunday, November 2. Sunday, November 1, Google says. Okay, thank you. I think that Katie Donovan, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to respond, Madam Chair, about the daylight savings time.
Okay, oh, thank you. I'm glad, everybody. All right, Cory, your hand's still up, too. So, all right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the date and time for special town meeting? The October 3 at 1:00 p.m., or 6th, or 7th at 5:00 p.m., and at Veterans Field. So let's take a vote on that. I'll take a roll call. Vote. Selectman Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectman Metters.
Aye.
Selectman Castro.
Aye.
Selectman Dykens, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the chair says aye. All right, we have set the date, time, and location. So further going forward, we can discuss referring the petition protective zoning bylaw amendment to planning board. Do we have a discussion or a motion? I see Cory's hand is up.
Yes, just back up one, I know we had some discussion about the cost associated with this. Did we have a formal vote on that earlier? I don't recall.
No, we did not. No. Would you like to take that up before we move forward?
We formally moved that we asked legal counsel for the parameters or the possibility of the applicant paying for some or all of the costs associated with a special town meeting.
And for the advertising, do we want?
In regards to, in regards, yeah, yeah.
We'll discuss that on the referral.
Whatever scope is allowed, would potentially be allowable, yes.
Okay. Imagine that we'll talk about the petition, advertising costs at the, with the petition referral to planning board. All right, Jill, your hand is up. Okay, we have a second. And then Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I did reach out to town council, and if you don't mind, if I could just read a quick email response, anticipating that someone was going to ask this question. Just get to it. So he had wrote to me that there's nothing in the statute that would allow the town to require or request the petitioner to pay costs associated with a petition special town meeting. Once a valid petition with the requisite number of signatures is submitted, the BOS is required to call the STM. Usual town meeting protocol and cost responsibilities would apply. That said, nothing would prohibit the petitioner or anyone else from making a voluntary donation or gift to the town for a specified purpose. The parties should avoid any perceived quid pro quo arrangement that would infer favorable treatment of the donor by any town board or officer in consideration of any such donation.
Okay, thank you. Does that satisfy? Thanks for you, Cory.
Yes, Madam Chair, it does.
Okay, Peter?
Madam Chair, does that then follow over towards the planning board, which normally isn't, I thought, I thought the advertisements were paid for by the applicant. It's not a deal breaker for me. I don't care, I was just curious.
I think we were talking about the cost for the special town meeting, Peter, and that's in excess, or it took approximately $11,000. If we discuss referring over the petition, that the cost of advertising, we can bring that up at that time. How's that? Does that work? Good?
Yes.
All right, okay. All right, great. All right, so where are we? We're at?
Dean wants to talk.
Dean.
It has a sound.
Dean.
So Cory has made the motion, and it was seconded by someone, I think Peter, to ask the town council. We now have the town council's sort of informal opinion. Frankly, based on his, the language that he, that Jill read toward the end of his opinion, I'm inclined to not, not want us to go forward with asking them to, asking the applicant to pay anything, because I wouldn't want there to be any perception that this town meeting, whatever it decides, is somehow tainted, that its deliberations is somehow tainted. Not that I'm ascribing any ill intent on anybody's part, but I think we're better to avoid any appearances of conflict. So if that, if this, the motion, I'm not even sure the motion is relevant at this point, because it's, we just got the opinion.
Right. I didn't, I didn't ask to rescind the motion, but I think I should do that formally, if that's what Cory wishes. And Peter will rescind his second.
I would formally withdraw my motion.
Great.
Okay, Peter, thank you. Thank you both. Okay. All right. All right. Well, then, let's move on to the, refer the petition to the planning board. Any discussion or motion? We don't have any discussion or motion to refer.
Oh, Dean has his hand up.
We have hands up.
Okay. You know, I'm having a tough time, guys. This, this particular meeting, I'm not seeing you all like I usually do, and I'm not sure what that is. I need to check my settings. So we have...
Yeah, I, I got them all, and it looked like Dean was about three seconds before Jeff.
Thank you. Dean, Jeff, and then Cory. Thank you.
And I was, I think the reason my, my raise my hand feature is working is because you can't see it, Serene, that's why my...
I don't know. It's, yeah, whatever. We're doing the best we can.
I wanted to ask either Peter or Cory or Katie, you know, how much time are we allotted under the law to refer this to the planning board? And the second point I wanted to make is after this motion is disposed of, I wanted to offer a motion about relating to whether any other articles can be added to this form. Is that's in the, okay, that was right, thank you.
Yeah, we were going to bring it up in that order, Dean, if that's okay. Katie, can you speak to the timing of this issue?
Sure, Madam Chair, thank you. So the, the board has 65, technically has 65 days to refer an item to the planning board. However, where the board has to now, under a special town meeting requirements, have, hold a special town meeting within 45 days, our recommendation would be that it would be done as soon as possible. The planning board does need two consecutive weeks of advertising in order to hold a hearing. And we're anticipating that if, if referred, it would be, September 28 would be the hearing, because that's the, the earliest we could actually hold a hearing after tonight's meeting. And obviously, the only time in between now and October 3. So that would be the anticipated date. So I hope that answers Selectman Castro's question.
It did. Dean, it is. Peter, did you have a question for Katie? I saw you.
Well, yeah, Katie, I'm trying to look at my calendar. September 28 is what day? And would we come?
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, so...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's a Monday. It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
Okay, so it still could get to the, to us by the next day for the, for the special town meeting.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
And that's the only...
Jeff?
No, I'm just saying, it's very time constrained. It happens to be Yom Kippur, and it's very time constrained. And it gives us, you know, a day or two to cogitate. Anyway, it's just very, very, very tight timeline here. Not the kind of thoughtful, judicious decisions, decision-making that we are used to in this town. I hate to keep repeating myself, but I feel very ambivalent about this, even though I love that Montemoy Theater. I feel ambivalent about this approach. I don't like the approach at all. In a time where we're having a pandemic, it really is very selfish. I'll say it again. Anyway, I think that we have to ask the planning board to have their hearing as early as they possibly can, because we have to, we have to push this town meeting on the 3. So 28, I guess, is the day. It's two weeks. If we start, if they start to advertise tomorrow, it's two weeks since.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, anything else?
No, I'm done.
Okay, Cory, and then Peter, and then Dean. Cory?
Hold on, okay, unmuted. No, I was just gonna, I was just ready to say, I was ready to make a motion to prefer this to the planning board to hold a public hearing.
If everybody's fine with that, we'll make the motion, and then we'll, I'll continue the discussion, just to move this forward. Do you have a second?
Second motion.
Second, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Peter, any thoughts?
No.
Your hand was up.
Cory, did you give us a date? We didn't have a date on that.
Well, are we setting the date with the planning board, the requirements of the, with Katie, Katie can clarify this, that they'll need the two weeks of advertising? So I'm assuming the target date will still be September 28, but are we specifically calling that out?
Through the chair, yeah, through the chair. No, actually, the date doesn't have to be specified by the Board of Selectmen, they just have to refer it to the planning board, and then planning board would, would set the hearing date. board and then planning board would, would set the hearing date. So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Katie, very much. Jeff, your hand's still up, is that?
No, I know, I'm good.
Okay. All right, did we have a motion and a second, correct?
Dean.
Dean has his hand up. Dean, okay, thanks, guys.
With respect, I'm, I'm going to support the motion as it has been presented. We'll get this over to the planning board. We certainly should leave it to the planning board to set the date. And it really is concerning to me if the 28th is, and I, it's not showing my little calendar here, but if that's the Jewish holiday, it would be insensitive for the planning board to hold a hearing that night, in my opinion. Both not, I don't know, you know, it might affect certain, it might be relevant to certain members of the, the board, the staff, and the public. And that may mean a delay in, in getting it over to us for a recommendation to town meeting. But I, I just really wanted to make that comment. I suspect others might feel the same way. But I echo what Selectman Dykens was saying about the, the constraints, the time constraints that are being forced upon us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean, I appreciate that. Any further comment before we take a vote? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to take a roll call to refer the petition protective zoning bylaw amendment article to the planning board. So let's, yes, go ahead.
Katie, Katie, raise your hand.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, just, just for clarification purposes, the planning board does already have a meeting scheduled for that evening. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there may be other hearings already scheduled for that time period. So we're not scheduling a specific meeting. It's just something that, that was already on the, that was already on the schedule for the planning board anyway. So I apologize if it's, if it's a conflict, but that is a date that they've already set for a meeting.
Okay, Katie, thank you for the clarification. Okay, time for the vote. So start with Selectman Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectman Metters.
Aye.
Selectman Dankins.
Aye.
Selectman Castro.
Aye.
And chair says aye. Okay, all right. Discuss any additional articles to be included on the special town meeting warrant. We did get, you know, we have heard from two of the petitioners. We've heard from the town moderator, a little bit of the consensus from us on how we feel about continuing forward. The town, Jill and Shawna did send us the carryover postponement articles for us to review. And so I'm just opening it up for discussion and possible motion on whether we want to add any additional articles to the special town warrant. Any discussion? Dean, I see your hands up.
Madam Chair, consistent with what I've said, I do, I sense that I am, there, one of the proponents of the climate change petition is still on. I don't know if Nickerson is still on. If, if they're so inclined to change their request, then, then I, I, I wouldn't pursue the motion I'm about to make. But I'm going to offer the motion that those two articles be placed on the warrant for this special town.
Okay, so you are making that motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, yeah. Is anybody from the two petition articles that spoke earlier on the call? I see Ms. Williams is, Janet's on the call. Does she want to speak to this in any manner? I hear none. And Dean's the only one with a hand up. Okay. So we have a second and a, a motion and a second to include the two aforementioned climate change and plastic bottle ban articles on the warrant. Do we have any further discussion? Jeff?
Yeah, I, I, I understand where Selectman Castro is coming from and I appreciate his, his, his abiding by his, his beliefs. I also think that it was prudent of us to have as short a town meeting as, as possible and to put other articles on this warrant is probably not prudent. So I will not vote in favor of, of this motion, but I do, do understand where Dean is coming from and I like the sentiment, but because of the COVID, I'm not going to support it. Thank you very much. And plus, I believe, I do believe it's taking voices out of town meeting unnecessarily. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And I've made my comments already prior. I'm not going to reiterate them. Corey?
No, I just want to reiterate like Selectman Dykens, that I too respect Selectman Castro's position and what in his, his, his motion, but I too believe that the special town meeting should be a one agenda item. So I will not be voting in favor of this. But I do respect his position.
Thank you. Peter, did you have any comment?
I made my comments before, Madam Chair, and it echoed Corey and Jeff.
Okay. Does the town moderator want to weigh in again on this? Okay, hearing not from the town moderator. Okay. All right, so I think we're prepared. Go ahead.
I apologize, Madam Chairman. No, thank you. I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I think what you were doing obviously is totally within your purview, but it's, I, I fully agree with you. You understand my feelings on town meeting and I know you all share them. And I thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, we're prepared to take a vote. I will start the roll. Selectman Kokolas.
State the motion again, I think.
I, Shawna, do you want to? Yes, go ahead.
I've heard the, I've heard the comments of everyone. I stand by my position. I don't need to have a public demonstration of my vote. I'm going to withdraw the motion. I, I stand by my promise back then, but clearly it's, it would be a one to four vote. And I, I do appreciate very much what the, what the moderator, what the moderator has said. I think that's a very powerful argument. I was sort of hoping that the sponsors of the, of the two petitions would have perhaps been inclined to withdraw their request, but they haven't. So that's why I made the motion. But I'm withdrawing the motion at this time and perhaps Mr. Dykens would withdraw the second and that'll end this matter.
I will withdraw the second.
Yep.
I will withdraw the second.
The matter has ended. Thank you, Jeff. The matter has ended. All right, our last order of business tonight is to set the date to close the warrant. And like, Jill, that would be the 29th? Is that what we're looking at?
We're looking at September 15th, so a week from today to close the warrant so we can get it posted by September 18th.
Okay. Oh, I see. Okay, sorry. All right. Do we have a motion to close the warrant September 15th?
Madam Chair, it's Peter, we, a motion to close the warrant on September 15th.
Okay, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll on, on closing the warrant on September 15th. Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, so we have set, set the special town meeting. All right, so moving forward, our next order of business would be to have a public comment on the prior discussion. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the prior agenda item in the public comments, public discussion?
Elaine Gibbs?
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, can you hear me, Susanna Nickerson?
Sure, we can just drop, shout.
I'm fine.
I'm down.
Right.
Hi, it's Susanna Nickerson, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, so I've heard so far. Sorry, I dropped off for a second. Pushed the wrong button. We have Elaine and then Susanna. Okay, Elaine, go ahead.
Yes, I have comments on two agenda, two items with respect to the COVID and the squire. I would ask that Bob Duncanson ask why they were closed.
Elaine, 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 we're, this is a comment period in regard to the business agenda item that we just discussed. This is where you would comment on the new business that we just discussed, which was the petition special town meeting, discussion dates and articles to include on the warrant.
All right, that's fine. But I would say that the fact that COVID wasn't on the agenda, which should have been on a weekly basis, I would like to comment and say that we need to find out why they were closed and if everybody's contested.
Elaine, this is not, you're out of order right now. So you're out of order.
It's out of order that a restaurant opened, but I'll talk about.
You're out of order. And if you want to speak to the special town meeting, you're welcome to do so right now.
I will do that. I, I'm a little confused by the new rules. I apologize. In terms of special town, I agree, I agree with Bill Litchfield and the entire board that it's unfortunate this has been brought to the fore and that we have to deal with this. $12,000 that private taxpayers have to pay on a private development project with no guarantee that a theater is ever going to open. There is nothing in this proposal that is going to guarantee that. And that's why I think a lot of people were excited about it. And I also agree with Dean and I guess most of you that there should be no consideration allowed to have the petitioner pay for any portion of it. That would give the wrong impression that if you have money, you can get things before the board and get them approved. I also think that the fact that it's only three and a half weeks until the special town meeting is just unfortunate because September 28th, the agenda for the planning board is already full. And that's going to be a real problem for people. You know, this is a, this is a big item. It's a massive project with a lot of implications for the town. And also, I would just point out that Peter had mentioned something about affordable housing as part of this project. That's not my understanding. My understanding, these condominiums are going to be about a million dollars apiece. I could be wrong, but that's what I'm understanding. This is not about putting in housing that we need. This is about something else. So I hope that this will be vetted, that it will go before the planning board. And I think it's really unfortunate that we're, we're, this, we're in such a time crunch because I don't think people, something that could change the entire downtown should be rushed through in three and a half weeks. It's, it's a major change in our, our bylaw to get a, a private development project through. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Susanna?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I had muted my phone during, before the discussion and was not able to get back on in time to make this statement, which is, we're perfectly fine as a group going to the regular town meeting that's scheduled for the spring. My understanding was that maybe some petitioners would choose to go later and some earlier. So I'm so grateful for this whole discussion you've had tonight. And I totally understand the, why you made the choice you made and not, you know, having everyone go at once in a better time of the year. And thank you so much for all of your time and effort on this project.
Thank you very much, Susanna. We appreciate that. Is there any other folks that want to speak, remote participants that want to speak to the, the, the business item agenda, business agenda item we have? Okay, hearing none, then I will accept a motion to adjourn this meeting this evening.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Jeff. A second?
Second.
Second from Peter. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, everyone, and enjoy your evening. And thank you to the staff for participating and preparing the documents for us this evening. And be well, Chatham. Take care.